All right, welcome everyone. We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. The October 23 regular meeting of the committee of the whole and we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
Councilmember Stallins.
Present.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Sumner. Councilmember Meek. Councilmember Bogard.
Present.
Councilmember Velez.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Droul.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, you're able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item four, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting, September 18 regular meeting. Those minutes are in your packet?
So should accept.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion with that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can't get my words out. All right, that motion passes. Item five, a small business commission update, Ms. Deanna Sova, you are up.
Hello, how are y'all tonight?
Good.
Well.
I'm Deanna Sovey, I'm currently the chair for the Small Business Commission. And this is just kind of some 24, 5 highlights and updates and impact. So we've completed our second year. We've supported the newly created entertainment district and other local small business events. We are currently going to be hosting on November 10 at Murray State University's Hopkinsville campus, the first small business conference. Shop Small Saturday, we're collaborating, there's a collaboration with partnerships from the local Chamber of Commerce, the Hopkinsville Downtown Renaissance Development Services, and the Small Business Commission to support that on November 29. We've held two small business listening sessions with strong attendance and several attendees received immediate solutions that impacted their businesses. Matter of fact, we had a couple of folks from CDS that were there and were able to answer those questions instantly. So we felt like those are probably, we know those are things that we're going to do again going forward. The commission is currently working on a number of issues, a number of things to hopefully support the small business community, some grants and some incentive programs. We've launched a consistent marketing campaign to build awareness and engagement. We've partnered with local Hopkinsville to strengthen that visibility and momentum within the business community. We're working on changes to support reducing some fees for the small businesses. And again, I'm not going to get into the weeds on that, but we will bring those initiatives eventually. You know, we hope to counsel. And just continue to support the opportunities to help the small businesses grow and thrive here in Hopkinsville. I'm happy to answer any questions. If you have any questions, I will answer the questions that I'm able to answer. Maybe I should say that.
If I have questions? Oh ma'am.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item B, quarterly police department report, Chief Jason Newby.
Good evening, everybody. Oh. All right, so third quarter, we made a total of 622 arrests. 68 of those were from traffic stops, 266 of those were criminal arrest. We arrested 12 juveniles, we served 276 arrest warrants. And in the third quarter, we answered just under 11,000 calls for service. It's kind of hard to see, I mean, because it is such a big map, but those are the locations of the arrests. So as you can see, it's not just specific wards, it's all over the, it's all over the city. So officers are getting out and about like they're supposed to. And their arrests are equal throughout the city. Collisions, we had 229. Unfortunately, we did have another fatal. Property damage other than vehicles, like I said before, that's if a car hits a mailbox or a fence or something other than another vehicle. We had 178 of those. And of those 229 collisions, 75 of those did result in injuries. Then there's a map of where these collisions are at the city. 41A is obviously a big one. And then of course, two intersections right outside the municipal building here and North Drive and 7th are your, your main culprits. Citations, we issued 863, 252 of those were traffic citations. 291 of those were criminal citations. And what those are, maybe it's possession of marijuana, something like that, where you just cite them for a criminal charge and they're not necessarily arrested. And then 41 of those citations were issued to juveniles. And that is where the citations are being issued again. You know, officers are doing pretty good coverage, making sure they're hitting all areas of the, of the city. Caesars, this third quarter, we seized 31 guns, a little over two pounds of meth, a little over two alcohol, 1.7 pounds of marijuana, nine grams of cocaine. So as you can see, the seizures are down quite a bit from the last quarter. Which, which is good. We're hitting the streets just as hard as we were before. We still have all these officers that are on the task force. So they haven't eased up, but as you can see, we're starting to put a dent in the drugs. It could come back up next quarter, but for this quarter, the drug was down. This year alone, our ATF task force officer has made 19 indictments in federal court in Paducah. That's not counting our DEA task force officers. So when I do the final year report, I will let you know how many federal indictments that we did with our officers. But it's starting to make a difference. The community is working better with us. The prosecutors in Paducah are getting more aggressive, Commonwealth Attorney's Office here has become more aggressive. And it's, it's starting to show, it's starting to make a difference. We had a lot of special events this third quarter. We had cops and bobbers, the junior citizens, citizens academy. We had a town hall award won that went very well. We did a cookout at Joe Mumford. We appeared basically like a touch of truck at the YMCA summer camp event. We hosted a couple of human trafficking awareness trainings. Hosted a diplomat session. We met with the students at Christian County High School and upward bound program. We had a good turnout there. Nature's Fest at Jeffers Bend, multiple community events. I couldn't even begin to tell you how many. And then there's our buddy Bolo. So he's happy to answer any questions. And again, if there's any stats that you all like that I'm not showing you, let me know. I haven't gotten any requests from you, so I'm assuming these reports are, are adequate. But if there is anything else you would like to see, just don't hesitate to let me know. Any questions?
Questions?
Good. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, IT update, Ms. Amanda Brunt. Come on down.
All right, well, thank you all for letting me present tonight. I'm just going to give you all a quick overview of what we've had going on in the IT department and focus specifically on three big projects that we have going on and provide you with updates on where we are in those projects. When we take a look at our IT department, we focus on four main areas and you'll see that everything we do is going to fall within one of these areas. We've got network infrastructure and stability. When you're talking internet, phone, server, email, anything that's within our network, we maintain that to make sure that staff, there's no downtime so that staff can just work fluidly. And we focus heavily on cybersecurity. In 2025 of this year, we actually did a cybersecurity checkup just to make sure, we wanted to see where our vulnerabilities were. We did identify a few and we're working through those to make sure that we are secure and stable when it comes to cybersecurity. One thing that I did learn is that when you're talking about cybersecurity, across any organization, staff is usually your biggest vulnerability. So we do regular phishing tests, because if you think about it, you have 300 staff, someone's going to click the link. So we do those regular phishing tests. And staff who do click the link, we have follow-up training. So we're trying to equip and educate our staff so that they know what to look for, so that it mitigates that risk for us as well. End user support, we have a great team. Anytime you have issues with computers, phone, printer, anything, we're there to support. We have a great ticketing system. And then something we're delving into this year that I'm really excited about, we'll talk about a little bit, is artificial intelligence. Oh, sorry Troy, I'll just throw my papers at you. So three main things I said we're going to talk about as far as projects. The first one is a grant funded project, but the other two, you all did vote to fund this year. And I want to just give you a quick shout out, say thank you. These are big projects. But you saw them as fit or important to invest in. They're not projects you're going to do ribbon cuttings on, we're probably not going to be on the front page of the paper talking about network security or infrastructure unless we have a breach, but we're putting all the mitigations in place to prevent that. But they are important things that you chose to invest in, so I do appreciate that. But this first one is our network switch replacement. When we talk about network stability, we talk about internet, phone, software, files, all of this is housed within our network. All of that talks to each other through the switches. So these switches that we have, some of them are pushing 10 plus years. And if you're looking in the technology world, you're pretty geriatric by four, five, six years. So we're really pushing those switches and when you start, get to that level of age, you're looking at maybe increased security risk. You're going to just have age-related issues. Someone at the police department may be trying to open a file. Again, everything, the hub is right here in City Hall. But it's talking through the switches to maybe the police department, they're trying to open a file. It takes five minutes to open the file, you can imagine, if you sat there waiting for a file to open. So if you see some of those issues, that's a lot from our switches. So replacing these is going to alleviate a lot, about 80% of those issues. So that's one of the big projects we have going on. This has been bid out, a vendor has been selected, the equipment's been ordered. So we expect this to start in the next few weeks. So this ought to be, the staff's going to be pretty happy about this one, I think. Our second project is our Cisco phone system software upgrade. If you recall, this is a two-part process. Last year, we did the hardware equipment, that's where we all got our new phones on our desk. This year, we're actually doing the software upgrade. And the software upgrade, one thing I'm particularly excited, excited about is one of the features that we're going to get is voicemail to email. So also focusing on communication for the city, anytime you all leave a voicemail, it's going to ping in our email as well and let us know what the message is. So for those of us who may not check our voicemail as regularly, we're going to be receiving those messages. So that's just one of the features off the top of my head that I really am excited about getting. But just in general, it's going to be improved call quality, better equipment, just improving that overall infrastructure. And that's one of the ones that you all did find, so thank you. Our third project, probably one of our most important, is our disaster recovery. We need to know that whether we have a flood, tornado, earthquake, cybersecurity breach, that we are still operational. And this project is going to be, this is going to, this project is going to ensure that. Most anything, I've heard someone saying our department, most anything, you can throw enough money at it and get a new one, make it work. But if you think about our data and all the data that's housed within our servers or that's housed here within our hub, if that gets destroyed, we could have a billion dollars and it's just gone. There's nothing you can do about it. So it's really important that we put these measures in place to make sure that that data is backed up, that we're able to access that no matter the issue that we have. So this project is going to ensure that. The bid packet is complete for this, so we're going to be submitting that to the public soon to be requesting bids for that. And we will see that done this year. One project I am really excited about is our AI advisory committee. We've been commissioned to explore, first of all, how are we using artificial intelligence? And let me tell you, whether, whether you like it, agree with it, hate it, whatever, it's here. And it's, it's being used across municipalities, across the nation, across the world. Everybody is using AI. So we wanted to get ahead of this and make, well, I don't even know if you can stay ahead of it as fast as it's changing. But we wanted to make sure we were involved. First of all, how are we using it? How can we use it? And most importantly, how can we make sure that we are safe as we are using it? Because we've learned as we've delved into this, that there are risks if you do it incorrectly. So we want to make sure that we're identifying those risks, make sure that we are utilizing it to its capacity, because there are so many things you can use it for and it can make your job very efficient. But we want to be safe as we're doing it. Our city administrator actually just had the opportunity to attend a conference in Harvard. There he met leading AI experts and innovators. We were able to kind of capitalize on that because we now have connections with those guys. One of them in this picture, his name is Noam Mytall, I believe is how you pronounce his name. And he was, he's actually Israeli and he was at this conference and he spoke at Harvard. Great guy, incredible to talk to. We wanted to connect with him just to kind of pick his brain. As we're navigating this process, we're trying to lean on the experts. So what is the best way to navigate this? Because this is kind of a new territory for us too. Well, he said, hey guys, I'm in Nashville, can I drive up and have a cup of coffee with you? We're like, absolutely. So we sat down for like two and a half hours. We met with him, we picked his brain, got a lot of great insightful information. We met another guy named Micah who spoke at the conference and he's just been giving us guidance on, first thing he said, put a policy in place if you're using it. Here's the things that need to be covered in a policy. So we've drafted that as a team, it's going up to be signed so we can implement that. Because we do, we did assess the staff, staff are using AI, which again, it's an incredible tool, but we want to make sure that you're using it safely. So we've drafted that policy and in the future, we're going to be looking at how department duties, maybe those repetitive things, how can it be implemented to kind of mitigate those and save time so we can focus on broader, more, or just bigger things, so we don't have to take up our time with those menial tasks. So I'm excited about this team. The biggest challenge with this team is getting a full group photo. We're always together, we always forget to take a photo and getting everybody in one place at once, we never get it done. But we got almost AI'd Dave into this, but I didn't, didn't get that far. But that's our advisory committee. Now looking forward, we want to make sure we refine our testing for backup and recovery. We do have systems in place. But like I said, we did that risk assessment, there are things that we can do better. We're looking into that, how we can refine that. Ongoing training, we've committed to 40 hours training of each to stay on top of technology trends, myself included, just to make sure that as things change, we're on top of that. And then we want to focus on proactive measures. We want to put measures, ideally in a perfect IT world, if you have everything running smoothly, you're kind of in the background thinking about future issues that could happen. So we're not reactive to things, we're being proactive. So we're consistently, we want to get everything in a place where it's a well-oiled machine. So we're on the backend, we can be thinking about future issues, maybe thinking about AI, thinking about new programs we can bring in to help staff do their job more effectively and mitigate these issues. So that's what we're working toward. That's a recap of the IT team. I told you it'd be quick. I hope I stood my ground. Any questions?
Questions?
I do, I have one. You, you say you have a policy concerning AI.
Yes.
I know that recently Kenneth Grabara had a new employee policy manual. Will, will that AI policy be integrated into the policy manual? Okay.
And now with AI taking us by storm, we're even considering annual AI training for people. Just, and there's those out there who doesn't, don't even understand what it is. So just, what is it? And if you are using it, how to use it effectively and just kind of put it in as a yearly training.
Yep, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any else?
Yes, Ms. Amanda, how is the Hot Town 311 going?
Going really well. People are still submitting tickets and we're still mitigating those ones. We did have a team meeting. Some of the tickets, we're kind of restructuring the timeline on the tickets because it may look like the ticket is late and getting rectified, but what's actually happening is there's a longer process when the ticket said this should be completed in 10 days. Well, you can't complete it in a 10-day process. So we're just navigating those little issues. If you haven't downloaded the 311 app, I really encourage you to do so. Tell your citizens about the 311 app. It's just a quick, easy way they can report concerns. And I know we're, we can still get a lot of phone calls and it's just, it makes it easy on the citizens. It helps us, it helps us keep track. So thank you for bringing that up. But going well, excited about it.
That's great. Else? You're good.
All right, thank you guys.
All right, item D, monthly agency board council appointee report, Ward 9, Ms. Brittany.
I do not have one. I started teaching and so I haven't been to the last one unless Troy has an update from the library.
If you want to.
We finished the upstairs section with Grant and the Parks and the Library Association. If you guys found that one basically for children and young adults upstairs. And that's what separates them from the rest. For children, you have security. You don't have a kid, there's really only one of these upstairs. Sometimes a belt downstairs, one of those kids upstairs. And since the security reason, we changed the elevator, you've never been on the elevator there at the library. No joke, the official in there, hit the button, run upstairs and meet.
Oh wow.
But now we've changed that to this eight day compliance. The bathrooms, again, for more security reasons, similar to what you see at the airport, there's really more doors. Then, again, some kids, I'm eight day compliant and same. If they're going to give you a yes up the mail, you can finish the upstairs.
It needs to be done.
Those people in the county. And, and it does.
The back wall at the bottom part, when it rains, it's leaking inside of there, so. Second, that we need to take care of our buildings.
All right. All right, thank you. Item E, quarterly business list review, that is in your packet as well. Does anybody see anything on there that needs to change? Add, delete? No? Everybody good? Okay, we will skip that one. Item 6, unfinished business tax liability on net profits. And before we start this, we have two individuals with us tonight that are going to speak. First, we're going to call on State Representative Myron Dawson.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to join you here this evening. Do want you to know, I felt a little apprehensive coming in, speaking to you. I don't like stepping into your purview. But I have to say, I do feel comfortable because of the relationship that I have built with Mayor Knight and with many of the council members serving. It's on a regular basis, we have multiple calls, so at least once a week, sometimes twice a week. And for that, I'd like to share with all of our council members, please, please, feel free to reach out to me if you think I can help you on something. I understand how hard your job is that you're doing. I previously served in local government on the Christian County Fiscal Court before I went to Frankfurt. And it's kind of hard for me to believe, but January will start my 20th year of representing the 9th District. And as I was told when I was younger by individuals like a former employer of mine behind us, Mr. Wayne Hunt, the gray hairs, that's what the gray hairs report on top and I've gotten to that point. So if I can share some knowledge with you or help you trying to deal with an issue, please, please take full advantage of that. I am here to speak to you this evening concerning the net profit tax. And I'm asking you to please consider looking at this and maybe possible changes. I've had multiple business owners reach out to me. Several of those are constituents of mine, which is why I wanted to come here tonight and speak to you. Very important to look at these businesses here locally and remember the impact they have on Christian County. Job creation, which leads to revenue, tax revenue coming into government, which for those of us like myself who are small business owners, that's revenue that those employees spend with us. Also, what they are able and what they participate here in our community, whether it's sponsoring events that are taking place here locally, support of our high school teams, of Little League, junior pro, they have a tremendous impact here on all of Christian County. They are so very important. And especially right now with an issue that we're looking concerning Ascend Elements. They are so very important and especially right now with an issue that we're looking concerning Ascend Elements and what the possibilities may be there in that industrial area. I have had conversations with house leadership, with Representative Jason Petrie from Todd County. He shares part of Christian with me and is Chair of Appropriations and Revenue. Conversations with Congressman Jamie Comer and conversations with our ag commissioner, Jonathan Shell, to put a bug in their ear, to let them know that there are concerns with that property. And we may need their help of finding contacts, businesses that may want to have access to that real estate. With speaking with the ag commissioner, it's important to know the General Assembly has put additional funding into the Department of Agriculture dealing with agricultural industrial development. We've done that with the purpose to make sure agriculture is fairly represented. And it's important to know how much revenue agriculture puts into Kentucky. Any ag related business in Kentucky, all of those combined generates over $60 billion in revenue. When you look at the county level, that number for Fayette County is two and a half billion. And Wayne, I think I might be accurate of saying that if you look at all agriculturally related businesses in Christian County, we're looking well over a billion, just impacting Christian County. So that's one of the things that we have emphasized on these ag related industrial developments. And we want to make sure that there's nothing there that could hinder one of those businesses to want to locate, which is why I wanted to come to you here this evening. And once again, urge you to please look at the net profit tax and see if there's some ways that we can move to make this better for our businesses. Next, I'm going to have our ag commissioners, Chief of Staff, Mark Bowlen, join us. But before I end, I do want to take an opportunity to think, Chief Newby? I needed to make sure I get this. Back maybe a month and a half, two months ago, I'd reached out to Chief Newby concerning traffic on Pembroke Road. And with speeding, he has helped that tremendously. It has made my constituents there in my home area safer. It's made my life a little bit more peaceful at home because my wife's not chilling me out anymore on this. So gee, thank you. You're appreciated. Once again, I want to thank all of you for allowing me to speak to you. And I hope you will take in consideration some changes coming here to this net profit tax. And now I'll have Mark Bowlen come and speak.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight. My name is Mark Bowlen. I am the Chief Staff at the Department of Agriculture. I was born and raised in Christian County. I've, I've been removed for about 20 years. I still have a home here in city limits and on a farm in North Christian. And this, this is home to me. But I'm here to, some of what Myron said about economic impact that farming has in Kentucky. Kentucky does GDP is about $2.3 billion or $230 billion. Agriculture is about 50 billion of that. So it's, it's a big percentage. And I know as in agriculture, not everybody knows everything about soybeans or ethanol or there, there's so many different things that we go through life, not having to think how we're fed. But I want to congratulate you all here because in Frankfurt, Christian County, Hopkinsville is a shining star in agriculture. Whether you talk about your ethanol plant or crusties, or you've got so many good things going on here in agriculture. We capital of the world. I've, I've seen the wheat downtown at the farmer's market. But I wanted to come and share something that I was involved in last year. As soon as we came into office with Commissioner Shell, we got a call, or I got a call from Tyson Foods in Henderson County. Excuse me, I'm choked up. And they said, can you please help us? We have the highest water and sewer plant bill of any Tysons in the United States. We just shut down our Chandler, Indiana plant. And this was, is next on the block if we can't get something worked out. And we're talking 1,300 employees, 600 farmers raising chickens, 300 and something farmers selling grain to their feed meals. So the impact is huge. You're talking 200, 2,000 jobs, the economic impact. And it, it takes such a little thing to move a big thing. And you guys have such a good reputation as a ag community. And, and I'm proud to say I'm from here. I would ask you to please consider this net payroll tax or net income tax. I don't, I don't want you to have an economic black eye when people start looking to, to locate here. And as Myron alluded to, we've just been given economic development money for the first time ever. And it's actual cash, not in tax incentives. So, and, and when we talk about economic development, we always look at Hopkinsville. Because you have so much of the things grown around here that, that could go into a, a plant or a, and I just want to say your ethanol plant is a shining star. I mean, the foresight of Mr. Hunt, when he came and did that with the back of settlement money, it's, it's just world renowned. And now we're looking at biodiesel fuels for aviation. And they're looking to put three $1 billion plants in the state of Kentucky. Because we have on the Mississippi and Ohio River, you've got the third, first and third in Kentucky, or I'm sorry, third and fifth, Northern Kentucky has Amazon and DHL. Louisville has UPS and then go down the river to Memphis and you've got FedEx, which is the largest. And Kentucky is so well positioned with our waterways to get some of, of these things in here. And water is so important and, and base water will be our downfall and fresh water is, is our golden star. But thank you for having me here tonight. And, and I asked council to please consider the farmers when you look into this. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, Mrs. Melissa Clayton, you are up.
Good evening.
Hello.
So Chairman Martin emailed me back the first of October and asked me to put some slides together tonight. He had four bullet points and so I'm going to go over those four. The first one was he wanted to see the numbers of how much revenue we had collected the year before the cap was removed and then the years after. We had, I had already pulled these numbers for the committee, the maximum tax liability committee. And we did five years, so I just went ahead and included all five years of that for you guys. I went ahead, when I pulled the numbers for them, it was March of 2025. So I just went ahead and, and did all the way through the fiscal year. These numbers are found on our website every June when I put the monthly financial report together. How much we collect in business license tax is one of the slides in the monthly financial report. So I just pulled the numbers off of those reports. There is one thing that I kind of need to point out. In the fiscal year 2324, we had some businesses that made really large estimated payments for tax that they did not owe. And so what happened with those was we contacted those businesses and we asked them not to make such big payments that if they made those payments, I was required by law to move that money and I would not be able to refund them. So what has happened with those large payments is there are credits on their account. I have to be really careful about what I talk about because we're not allowed to get into specifics. But I've added all of that up. It's a, it's a over $700,000 worth of estimated payments that caused our revenue really to be overstated that first year by about, I think it was $777,000. But if you adjusted those off, the actual revenue would have been about 4 million. Like if they hadn't made those big payments, our actual revenue would have been about 4,330. And then the amount transferred out would have been about 1.2 million instead of the 2 million that actually got transferred out. Y'all have any questions about that? All right, those were the first two bullet points in the email he sent me. I wanted to do just a little bit of education to kind of take those who weren't on council when these things were passed back in 2022. There's a municipal order or a law that requires me to move anything over the $10,000 maximum tax liability to the two funds that we've talked about, the Economic Development Fund and the Future Fire Station Fund. So required by law to do those transfers. I was asked to provide the cash fund balance in those two accounts. So in the Economic Development Fund balance, as of June 30th, we had $1,825,459. And in the Future Fire Station Fund, we had $249,388. And then he asked for a detailed listing of the expenses. But before I get into that, I just kind of want to point out to you guys another municipal order, another law that is on our books, which is Municipal Order 082022, which requires any economic development fund that you guys, when you guys give a big upfront grant to any, anybody in town, we are required to take that payroll tax revenue and that property tax revenue that they pay us and put it back in the Economic Development Fund. And then they put this little clause in there that I highlighted at the bottom. The Economic Development Fund may be used for future economic development incentives subject to city council approval. So no money can be spent out of the Economic Development Fund unless you guys approve it. It, it's written into our laws. So every time an expense comes out of the Economic Development Fund, it is a municipal order that you guys have passed and agreed to.
So I have a question, Melissa.
Yes.
Would it be fair to say that the money that is in the Economic Development Fund would be very similar to a bond in that if we have a business opportunity or economic development opportunity, instead of going to the market, we can fund that ourselves with that money?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I did prepare the Economic Development MO list. I had also given this list to the Tax Liability Committee. I kind of broke it up a little bit for you guys because it was a little bit confusing. There were a lot, the Economic Development Fund was already in existence before we removed the cap. And we had paid several items out of that and those items are at the top. So the small business stimulus grants that we did during COVID were, were paid out of this fund. All of those things that were paid out at the beginning, that money was moved into the Economic Development Fund by budget, by budget amendments, by budget ordinance. Like the council had funded those items and they were paid out of budget amendments. So then I went ahead and listed the economic payback to the fund 082022 that I just went over with you guys a minute ago. The items that have been funded out of the Economic Development Fund since the removal of the cap are listed there. The rail spur design out at Commerce Park Two, the construction. There've been a couple of smaller grants and then the road we did it at South, at South Park, the 250,000. All of those are the only economic development activities that have happened out of that fund. And the last expenditure was in April of 2025 where you guys loaned some money that we got paid back and that happened in April. Any questions about what's been spent out of the Economic Development Fund? Okay. And then the Future Fire Station Fund, I don't really track these separately, but there've been several things funded out of there. The fire feasibility study was funded out of there. Whenever we have bonded money for Fire Station Five, we have paid those bond issuance costs out of that fund. We've made $612,000 worth of bond payments and then $754,000 has gone into the construction out for Fire Station Five. So 100% of that money has been spent on fire stations as required. So then the last thing that, the fourth thing that Councilmember Martin asked me to do was to talk about the different tax rates. This paper that this on the screen are tax rates that I gave the committee that they had kind of came up with some percentages and stuff for us to kind of talk through. So the first one was the 1% to look at how much money we would have received if we had lowered the tax to 1%. And at that rate, we would have been short paying our bond payments for Fire Station Five. The next one was a 1.1% and the revenue, total revenue would have been 2,905,183. And then 722,000 would be enough to pay the Fire Station bonds and 10,000 would go into the Economic Development Fund. Let me just say that these are all estimates. And so if you have one of those businesses that doesn't make a profit or one of those businesses that we don't quite have enough money, we very well at a 1.1% could be short of having enough funds to pay our bond payments. And then the, the last rate we looked at was a 1.3%. And you can see the revenue would have been 3,376 and the transfer to the two funds would have been around $720,000 each. So I just kind of listed the comparison of the two rates, the actual what happened calendar year 2024. The estimate at 1.3 is the middle one. And then the estimate at 1.1, you can see the Economic Development Fund transfer kind of disappears at that rate. So I felt like even though he didn't ask, we needed to talk a little bit about what would happen on the general fund side, if you lower the tax rates. So these estimates are still based on calendar year 2024. And if you lowered the rate down to 1.1, we would lose approximately $400,000 out of the general fund. And if you lower it to 1.3, it's approximately $200,000 out of the general fund. At this point, and after my financial statement that I gave on Tuesday, I would not recommend us trying to absorb any of that. I would, we would talk about doing some budget cuts across the board. We would cut the, all of the departments. And then we would probably also have to cut all of our mandated agencies. So I kind of pulled just the 1.3 of what we would have to cut in the general fund if we lower the rate to 1.3. Each department would take, I think it's a half a percent cut. And then each agency would also take a half a percent cut. And I didn't really do the 1.1 because you can kind of like double that since the decrease is double. The last thing I wanted to leave you guys with is, you know, one of the first things that I always talk about and that's our tax rate compared to the other cities. You can see that we're currently at a one and a half percent rate. If you lower the rate to 1.3, we would be the lowest in the state. And 1.1, I mean, it's not even, I mean, it would be even lower. So even at 1.3, we become the lowest tax rate of cities our size and larger, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So I went through and ranked these and I took out Paducah and Mayfield because it varies and you can't tell. So that's 12. So out of the 12 on your list that we can tell something from, right now at 1.5%, we're number, the fourth lowest.
Yes, that's correct.
I got several questions.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to start other than the, on that point. Also, if you look at the, the list on here, other than maybe Louisville, we're also the most paupered. I'm going to throw that statistic out there as well. So on the 1.5 to 1.3%, I'm curious. You're saying that if we change that to the 1.3, that we have to make up about 200,000 this year?
In the general fund, yes.
In the general fund. And that's where you're referring to the possible cuts?
Yes.
All right. And we have 1.8 million sitting in the Economic Development Fund. Can we not simply use those funds to pay that difference for this year, which buys us seven, eight months to figure out going into a new budget? And then we don't have to do any cuts?
You guys are the only ones who can reprogram that money back over into the general fund?
I guess I'm asking, is that a legitimate option?
It is a legitimate option. Can I just?
Yeah, please.
Remind you that we have a $2,250,000 payment we have to make to Kitchen Food for their second half of the $4 million that we gave them in April. And.
Where were we planning on getting that? Where were we planning on getting that before?
I was very hopeful that we might use some of the Economic Development Fund to pay them and us not go back to the bond market. We bonded the first half of that money, and, um, I was going to recommend that we use the Economic Development Fund money, however much is in there, to pay the second half and not bond money again for this project.
Okay, so I think we have one point eight million in there.
Yes, that was as of June thirtieth.
Where are we at on our unassigned cash right now? What percentage are we running at right now?
Thirty-one was what we were on Tuesday.
Thirty, about thirty-one, thirty percent, thirty-one. The national average is about seventeen or eighteen from everything I can find. Kentucky League of Cities offer, suggest around ten to fifteen percent.
We have an ordinance that requires twenty percent.
I'm getting there, because I, I remember these from way back when I used to sit back there. Robert Martin's goal was always twenty-two percent. That's what he used to preach to the council and all. We're at thirty-one percent, which is awesome. But the other side of me is torn with that because that also to me means that I'm not taking taxpayers' dollars and put it back into the community, whether it's infrastructure issues, whether it's flooding issues that we're dealing with. So when I see that and I see this, and I understand the arguments from all sides, look, I voted no for it the first time. And, and the more time I get to study things, it's probably more irritating I become because I enjoy research. So now I'm looking at this, and I don't see the cuts being made to the departments if we change to one point three. I don't see that having to happen because I think we have it. I also realize that we're sitting on a thirty-one percent, um, unassigned, uh, uh, funds, una, unassigned, thank you, um, which is extremely high, which is great because it allows mayor and councils opportunity to do more things. The problem is we're at thirty-one percent. Twenty-two used to be the standard, twenty is the ordinance, ten to fifteen is KLC's recommendation, eighteen percent is the national recommendation. We're at thirty-one, and then I sit here and argue with myself when I have people calling me about flooding issues, and I'm going, how can I keep telling you it's a money issue if I'm sitting on almost, working on double just in that area that we have an opportunity to use? Um, so me personally, the way everything has gone, and the more I've learned, I, I'm at the point where I would make a motion to, to move it to the one point three and, and use the, uh, Economic Development Fund to pay the shortfalling for this year, which gives us until next year, until the next budget year to look at everything. The question I would have along with that motion, and I don't know, is the, is how do we proceed with the amount of funds in that MOU that goes to each, each line? Um, I understand, I don't know that I agree with it a hundred percent, but I've always said that the people who run the businesses and organizations take on more of the risk because if I employ a hundred people and I pay for all the capital and I pay for all the stuff up front to start, if I go belly up tomorrow, I'll lose all of that, you go get a new job. I understand that side of the argument, too. I don't know if it should be economic development, or if it shouldn't be more of a public safety thing in general, because public safety to me, when I look at changing that to a public safety line, that covers our fire departments needing to be built, that covers our police chief needing more cars, that covers our fire department needing new trucks. I can tell you that I can articulate, it also covers the potholes in the road because that is a safety issue. It gives us more leeway to have opportunity to use those funds, in my opinion. Um, but my motion from now would be the one point three percent, we pay the shortfalling out of the Economic Development Fund.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, and it's second on the floor. Any further discussion?
I'd, I'd like to make a, a suggestion. This is something the council wants to do. Maybe it is, maybe it's not. We've got a fiduciary duty, and we put the budget together, the mayor brings it to us, and we started that July first, correct? Probably should have done it beforehand. We didn't, that's okay. I would, I don't know when you're talking about having this take effect, whether it's tomorrow or the beginning of the year, I don't, I don't know. But I think it should take effect. That's what the council wants to do upon the new budget year. I don't think it's a good idea to monkey with expenses or revenues mid-year. If, if that's kind of my, my take on that. So if that's a motion, it starts, if you're gonna do it, let's do it at the beginning of the new fiscal year. And not now, for example.
Is that a motion to amend the motion on the floor?
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
And I was on the same page as Chuck. Uh, we've already, we've already set our budget, and I'm a hundred percent with Councilman Sumner. Um, one, I mean, just from layman's terms, when businesses pay more taxes, who is essentially paying those taxes? It's going to be the consumer who is, you know, utilizing those businesses. So it trickles down. It's not that, that it's just these businesses are paying multiple different taxes to fund the city, but, you know, your consumers are paying higher prices on everything. Now, I do see Melissa's point. I mean, we've had this for however many years, and it's funding these two different things, but I do question that title of Economic Development Fund, um, because arguably, business owners could say, hey, are you giving that money to my competitors? Well, as a business owner, that would be very frustrating. You're taking money from one business and giving it to another. So with that, I do want to ask, does every business that has benefited from grants or whatever from the economic development, do they all pay into it?
So.
Are you seconding the amended motion?
I'm sorry, yes, I got on a rabbit trail. I second the amended motion, but I had a question that anyways.
Just clear into that.
Sorry, guys.
Now, yes, ma'am.
So of the ones that have been funded since the cap was removed, neither one of these businesses are open yet. These are both the extensions that you guys granted on Tuesday.
Okay.
Um, so they're not paying in yet because they're not open. The other things that were funded have been roads and the rail spur, and so there have been no businesses funded since the cap removal yet. There are, these two are allocated projects that have, have not been funded yet.
But in theory, in the future, they would, but not all recipients such as roads are going to pay into it. That's, okay. My next question is with, I forgot how to phrase it. Um, with the Economic Development Fund, um, could we change the percentages of what goes to fire department versus economic development?
Yes.
And because we are, you know, we're needing roughly seven million dollars to fund just the five-year plan for the fire departments.
Yes.
Um, and that's a huge need for the, the safety of our citizens, so.
So that would be a change to this municipal order that's on the screen, fifty-four twenty twenty-two. That's where you have the percentages and where, where they go, you would need to make, after this other amendment, after this other motion is voted on, you'll need to make another motion to amend this, um, municipal order.
Go ahead and vote on the motion to amend before we get too far into the weeds. So let's vote on.
I'm gonna say you can't, the way I did it, I don't think, because I put in there to use money from this year, and if your motion is to change that, then that part of my would have to come out.
The way I understand the motion is, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, was just to amend to have the effective date of July one of twenty-six.
Correct, correct.
And nothing else, just to amend your motion for an effective date, and then we can come back to the motion on the floor.
Yeah, you, that's what I'm trying to say. The money that I included in my motion to pay, we wouldn't have to.
Amended your motion.
Okay. Long as you're the attorney, long as you're good, sir. I'm good.
Yeah, yeah, it's very confusing.
Can I say something before we move on? So I'm wondering if we can kind of combine these two ideas. So could we, instead of having the economic, going back to what Clayton said, instead of having economic, part, part of the money going in the Economic Development Fund, have it kind of some kind of a safety fund or something, but not lower the tax rate? Like, so why does it have to be both? I mean, if, if the Economic Development Fund is kind of a hangup for, for some of the, the individuals that were on the committee.
It's the tax rate.
Okay, well then, I, I don't, I don't agree with lowering this tax rate. I'm just, I'm just gonna say my opinion. We've already voted on this last month. The fact that we're bringing it up again kind of bothers me if I'm being perfectly honest, but I think to be the very lowest tax rate in the whole state, I think is unnecessary. But I, I mean, that's just how I feel. I, my husband's a business owner. Of course, everyone wants lower tax rate, but this does not make sense to be the very lowest in the whole state. But that's just my opinion, and I appreciate all the business owners, I do, but, um, it does not make sense to do it. So that's my two cents.
We need to vote on the motion to amend first, and that is starting the bu, starting budget year next year.
Can still have discussion, right? You want discussion before the mo, the vote on the amendment?
Well, the discussion on the primary motion, you'll still have an opportunity to discuss that.
Okay.
If this passes or fails.
Okay.
All the clerks call the roll.
Clarify on what we're voting on, just to make sure we're on the same page?
We're, this, we're voting to start it fiscal year next year.
Lower the tax rate?
No, not yet. That's the next.
But that's the next one. So this is just, if it were to happen, it would start next year.
The next budget cycle. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
No.
Councilmember Giroud?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Craig?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
The motion to amend passes.
All right, so now we're back to the one point three percent. Any further discussion on that?
I would like to just, uh, thank the other council members for recognizing the hard work of the committee that, uh, Councilmember Velez and I sat on. And, uh, yeah, I was puzzled really, uh, because we are conservatives, we're Republicans, we're the people of lower taxes, and, you know, it didn't make sense not to give some help to businesses who had had such an onerous burden placed on them moving from the one rate to the other. And so I just want to thank them for doing that. I have, do have a question for Melissa. Can I still ask that, right? So Melissa, if there was a budget cut or a budget amendment or just cost amendment to the departments, what percentage did you estimate had to be made at one point three percent for us to meet the budget?
It was a half a percent.
One half of one percent. So, uh, you have to use your imagination. I got a dollar right here, okay? Here's a one dollar bill right here, and here's a penny. And I'm just wondering who in our whole life could not do that? If we, if we had a, a budget to me? We, we have to do it in our personal lives, and, you know, it, it's, it's gonna happen in every, and I know department heads are gonna look at me right now, and if, you know, there were lasers, I'd probably be dead right now. But the bottom line is, I see that we're moving on toward that, but we're not talking about a great huge amount. Here's a one dollar bill, and here's a penny. And that's, that's the difference that we're really talking about. And so we owe it to the taxpayers of the city and to the business owners, large and small, to, to do the best for all of them that we can, because there's that balance that we talked about in our committee. One is, we want to foster business, large and small, medium, whatever it is, and we also have to provide services for the citizens of the city who are paying taxes as well. And so I just wanted to, uh, that's all the question that I had. I'll turn it back over to Councilmember or the, the Chairman, uh, Martin, and just say that I'm, I'm glad to see you all join us in this vote.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
To ask something before we make that motion. Melissa, out of curiosity, what do the employees in the city and the workers in the city of Hopkinsville pay percentage-wise, uh, for taxes? Employee tax.
What do employees pay?
In, in the city.
One point nine five percent.
One point nine five percent. Thank you.
And businesses pay?
Right now, they pay one and a half percent.
Picking backing off of what has been discussed about taking money out of economic development, uh, one of the things that we've talked about in here is not doing any upfront payments moving forward. So if we're in agreement that that's the best course of action moving forward, um, I don't see a reason why we couldn't take what Clayton and Amy have said and make a motion to put that money in a combined fund, fire department, police department, fill up the holes, put up a new site, whatever needs to be done within the public safety realm. So I don't know how you want to word that, that's my motion.
Well, I, I, I think that's probably not germane to the motion that's on the floor. After this motion is voted upon, I think you can make that, uh, as a separate motion, but that's probably a budgetary issue that.
It, it is amending, um, Municipal Order fifty-four twenty twenty-two to change where the money goes. I think that's still on your screen. You, you will have to change this, but it's separate from changing the rate. So that will be a separate motion after you vote on the tax rate.
All right.
I withdraw my motion.
Councilmember Martin, I thought, you know, you, you can remind us all that, you know, we're not actually voting on this tonight, we're actually voting just to send it to the council.
Right.
So thi, this is a safe zone.
And to Amy's point, we did already vote on this a month ago, but there were five of us absent. We barely had enough for a quorum, so I don't, I just didn't. I just didn't think it didn't get a fair, it didn't get a fair shake. So that, that's my opinion, that's why I brought it back up. All right, so now we're gonna vote on the motion as amended the one point three percent, and again, starting next budget cycle.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
No.
Councilmember Giroud?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna need clarification on what we're voting on.
We were voting on lowering the rate to one point three percent and starting that next fiscal year.
No.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
No.
Councilmember Craig?
No.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek? Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
All right, so now we're gonna talk about the economic development or just go to the, go to the next one? Always something we can do at a later date.
We are gonna do it at a later date in the council meeting, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Interrupting.
You're good.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, new business reprogramming, better block, concept funding. Ms. Melissa, you are up again.
Um, so we, we gave some money to, uh, the local development corporation that is unspent, and we would like to take that money and put it into the intercity res, um, funds for the new intercity res committee to decide what to be done with that. I think.
Any questions on that?
Holly may, may should have been the one going over this and not me.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, there was to reallocate that money to go to the.
Did I get it right? Right.
Sorry.
I don't think we picked which line I, okay, to be, to go into the downtown incentive programs.
All right, any questions on that?
Motion to send it to council.
Yes, sir, motion. And second, any further discussion there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. Item number eight, others, anybody have anything to bring up under other?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, and really, I guess this is Doug. Uh, I have seen so much silliness going on Facebook over Blue Street Printing. So would you please update me and update the public as official position of Hopkinsville, where we are today and where we're going and why we're doing it?
The, uh, the report Tuesday, subsequent to, uh, Mr. Gardner's report, you'll see that the perimeter of the building has been secured. Um, chief has, uh, contacted, uh, Mr. Gardner, and I believe he's going to be here tomorrow, to get a more comprehensive structural exam, uh, because he mentioned during his presentation that that was a cursory exam. He's going to look at the structural integrity of the building. Uh, but most importantly, when we get that report, it's gonna be brought back to council. Nothing is gonna be done to demo, to repair, or to sell the building without it being brought back to council. Um, that report that we get back on this new comprehensive structural, um, integrity That report that we get back on this new comprehensive structural integrity exam is gonna be brought back to you and then you're gonna have some choices to make. You want to sell the property. If you want to sell it, then we need to evaluate after we get that report what basic property maintenance code violations are there in the building. Just hearing from the first report, we know we've got issues. Our code enforcement officers cite other property owners for buildings that are much better shaped than that. So we've got to take care of our own property, or if we sell it, we need to require that the new owner bring it up to code in a required amount of time. We don't know the extent yet until we get that report. But as soon as we get that, it will be shared with council and then you're gonna have the choice to either go ahead and sell it. We've already, I've asked Brittany to go ahead and place a municipal order on the agenda for the next meeting, next council meeting, to go ahead and declare it surplus so you can proceed with advertising it to sell for sealed bids. That's how we did it with the depot. So if you go ahead and surplus it, then we can get right to that, but we can't do that until we know the extent of the repairs that are necessary. And then we'll require that whoever purchases that property will have to bring it up to, bring it up to code. So you're either gonna have the option to, to sell it and have the purchaser bring it up to code, or you can repair it and spend the money, get a cost estimate to bring it up to code. Or you can demo it, but that's gonna be council's decision. And be glad to answer any questions, but that's where we are. There are no plans that I'm aware of to make a parking lot, to do anything. That entire corner that is now city property is going to be up to you to put out RFPs for, for some decisions on it. But the ultimate decision is, is up to you on what's gonna happen to that corner and that building. But again, the, the public safety issue and the code violations, that has to be dealt with first.
But would it be fair to say that Mayor Neitz is not gonna get out there on his bulldozer and tear that building down? It's gonna be a city council decision.
And I never said, I never said he was gonna tear it down.
I bet.
I, I mean, you're insinuating, but I never said that.
The city council will be just like we did the Holland Opera House. Steve will bring us the report. He will give it to you. You will figure out where the funds come from to fix it or tear it down. Either way, or we sell it. And I've always said, sell it. I don't believe we need to own property in the city of Hopkinsville. I'll tell you right now, we got the piece of property we need in our name now. We own this piece of property. You won't see a Herbie Kirby sitting in the front door of City Hall. You're not gonna see a one-ton truck sitting in the front door of City Hall. You don't see it in Paducah. You don't see it in Frankfurt. You don't see it in Clarksville. You don't even see it in Crawford or Oak Grove. So when you look at this very carefully, we're just our own front door. If someone wants to buy that building and they can afford whatever Mr. Kelly gives us and the cost is more power to them, I don't want to own it. I don't think we should own any piece of property unless it is a city building being used for the city. We don't need rental property. We don't need extra other stuff we don't need. We need parks. We need the cemeteries. We need public works, police stations, fire stations in this building here. We don't need a bunch of other stuff to maintain and worry about spending taxpayers' money on. But what we did do when we bought that piece of property is gonna clean up the front door of Hopkinsville. When you walk up to the front door of Hopkinsville, you shouldn't see Herbie Kirby's and you shouldn't see garbage trucks or anything like that sitting in the front door when you walk in the front door. And I've got the piece of property we needed. It was this piece of property from the right-hand side to Bobo's building because he owned that property. It did not belong to the city of Hopkinsville. That's the reason you see all them signs. This piece of property is rent, is for Bobo's building or for Cornerstone because he rented that piece out. And trust me, if you parked there when Bobo was alive, he would handwrite you a ticket. So that is where we're at. I want to move that piece of property. I want RFPs put out for that whole corner from the Boyd Building all the way back around. Someone needs retail on the bottom. Second story needs to be office space or needs to be apartments and third floor on it. And my vision is apartments with a balcony overlooking Main Street, looking what it, you could watch the parade or whatever else going on downtown in Founder Square. But that is your highest traffic count in the city is Ninth and Main. It does not need to be a park. It doesn't need a bench. It doesn't need to be a parking lot. The parking lot is right across the street there. There needs to be three stories. Not on the busiest corner on Hopkinsville.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
Mr. Crabtree, to answer your question on that, if, if there's an emergency demo, if for some reason Mr. Gardner comes back and says, this is an immediate danger, it cannot be rehabbed, it needs to be demoed, that would be brought back to council in the same manner that we brought the Holland Opera House to you to ask for an emergency demo. So, and either way, it's gonna come back to you to make that decision.
Yeah, well, may I speak? I was gonna say that, you know, I think all of us, you know, none of us have a real appetite to see real historic buildings torn down in Hopkinsville. We want to see as much of that history preserved as possible and hopefully someone can come and buy it and, and even incorporate that, maybe add stability to that building with whatever is done. But I'm still, I, I don't have the picture with me tonight. I wish I did. I'll pass it along to anybody that wants to, to email me or whatever, but that CDS had done, that, that architectural artist's rendering of what downtown Hopkinsville, I wish we had that right now so that we could all get a vision for that. I'm still in love with that picture. I'd love to see that as Hopkinsville. That would be amazing.
And in, in response, I'll, I'll just say I can show you an email in, in a few days that says the building was gonna be torn down, so. That's all I'll say about that. All right.
Um, I would like to request to move public comments from three minutes to five minutes so that people, you know, can advocate for their issues or whatever it is that they need.
So you're saying, as of right now, it's three minutes?
Yes.
You don't think it's long enough?
I don't.
Saying adjust it to five?
Let's address it right now.
Second.
Anybody on that?
Was that a motion in a second?
Is there a motion? Are you making a motion to?
I made it.
Motion to pass it on to council?
Make a motion to pass it on to council.
Second.
Can I say one thing on that really quick?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I, I wasn't here on Tuesday. I was on a very long flight, but I think I, I agree that, you know, people need to have enough time, but when the time is up, they're, we gotta, I mean, I, I guess this falls on the mayor. I don't know, but, you know, we're all kind of looking at each other like their time is up, their time is up. And so I, I feel like if we move it to five minutes, we've got, we've gotta politely cut people off.
We have talked about that, me and Doug have talked about that today. Like you see in Congress, you got a green light, a yellow light and a red light. It's gonna be sitting right up there. When your time goes off, you're done. And we're, we're cutting the microphone off.
Can I have clarification on the yielding ordinance?
That's, that's not specifically allowed in our existing ordinance. It just provides that a person may speak only once. May address council only once, so.
Thank you, Doug.
Second to amend that. Any further discussion? All those in favor to send it to council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, so that passes. So we'll go to item number nine, adjournment.
Hold on just a second, Travis. We, Troy's got something.
I can't remember when. I think it may be about what you're addressing at the email. There were various meetings and I asked the mayor and I don't think Steve, I even asked Chad, discussions about this building, and it was to my understanding, I guessed, that it was gonna be torn down. So I said to the mayor, when we saw Bobo's building being torn down, Bill Turner, our county historian, came every day and stood there at that fence and watched it torn down. So I said, if that building's gonna be torn down, the county historian and the museum should be able to go in there first. Because as Chad explained to me, like, there's an 1,800-something printing press and all that. So if that's the email you're referring to, I did send it to the museum saying, yeah, you should get in that building. It's in the email and I'll give it to you first thing.
All right.
And apparently that was a mistake. I've never told this council a non-truth and I'm not doing it now.
All right, item number nine, adjournment. Hold on a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.